Yeah.
Yeah.
My idea of making one.
Um, I'm calling.
Oh, I know how to make them.
Thank you so much, Sean.
You're welcome.
We have two little, um, nothing before and it's true.
Very nice one. All right, are we ready? We need order. Jill Lennard?
Here.
Michelle Allen?
Yeah.
Great human chance. Good line.
Here.
Mike Johnson?
There.
You don't have a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance is due to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I have one open forum request. We'll put that in the agenda under number fourteen. I have one other request for change to the agenda to reference sidewalk maintenance. Let's put that at item twelve C. Lloyd, are there any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Mr. Mayor, we need to add the resolution and license on the consent agenda.
Okay. Add to consent agenda?
Yes, please.
As page. Resolution for the Lions Club for gambling and liquor license.
For gambling.
Just gambling. Anything else? Motion through the agenda as amended.
I make motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
I'll second that.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh as amended the agenda. Consent agenda. Any issues with the consent agenda in the discussion?
I have a question on Metro West. Billing permits and inspections took two thousand fifty-nine dollars thirty cents. What were the billing permits? I mean, is it like? And the inspections, what were they? Like, what are we paying for?
It's the money we collect from the billing permits.
From all the ones that we've done, like probably from?
It's the ones that we collect, the money we collect, and when they find one out and do the final inspection, then they send us the bill and they get half of what we collect. So this is half of what we've taken.
Okay. And then recycling overpayment to the manor instead of one four twenty-four, was that last month's or last year's?
Actually, when we switched to Randy's sanitation, Montrose Mobile Manor stayed with waste management, and we didn't know that. And we've been charging them recycling, and they've been paying recycling to waste management also, so we have to give them back their money from Randy's because they didn't have Randy's service. And this is the first they've told us since twenty thirteen or whatever was it?
Okay. Thank you.
And anything else on the consent agenda? With the addition of the resolution twenty thirteen, we need a motion to that third clause.
Just with the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh to approve the consent agenda. Okay, let's move on to proof of taxation of reference public hearing. Would you?
We need to close the regular meeting and all the public hearing.
Your motion to close the meeting to address the proof of taxation of public hearing.
I don't think it's your motion.
Yeah, your motion is against it. Just close the regular meeting. Close session.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the public hearing?
Any other comments in reference to the taxation of the public hearing? Hearing none, move back into open session. Wright County Insurance Department.
Um, you know, Mr. Mayor, we need a motion though to number eight, the budget. We need a motion to approve that as presented.
Motion to approve the two thousand sixteen budget.
And levy.
And levy.
I do have a quick question, I just want to confirm on something. We were pretty close in our budget on council travel expenses. Last year we had three hundred and sixty-one dollars forty-six cents in travel expenses. For twenty fifteen, we budgeted twelve hundred dollars, and we're right at eleven thirty-eight seventy-seven. Is that right, or do we, where do we at, do you know?
That's what we're at.
That's what we're at? Okay, and where did all that come from?
It's for the hotel bills, for the conferences, and any wire that you've submitted.
Okay. Can I get copies of those, please? When we go, I know a few years ago when we talked about this, we have to have approval for any conferences, trainings, and anything that we go to. I don't think that is what's happening right now. For our League of Minnesota Cities, Deluth Conference there was, and for also newly elected back in February, that was also approved, but I don't think anything else has been approved. So the increase, eight hundred dollars in travel expenses is a big, big expense. So I just want to clarify just where that went.
Anything further? Motion to approve the two thousand sixteen budget and levy.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand sixteen levy and budget.
Second?
I'll second.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh.
I have some discussion on that though. Um, Wright County, it's been a lot of concerns in that open forum, or not open forum, the town hall, and it was, I was asked on my ride along, and I went back and, um, checked the last six months, because we pay an average of fifteen thousand dollars a month for Wright County. So for the last six months, I went through and just, I didn't go through any medicals or anything like that because, um, that's part of the, you know, fire department and all that kind of stuff. So basically, for Wright County, any kind of suspicious circumstances, traffic complaints, traffic stops, um, vehicles, anything like that, just telling that there was a hundred different issues that were within Montrose, with only sixteen of those being officer, um, contact. So basically, if you go back and if you look at your Wright County monthly reports that we get, you can see that there's only phone conversations, and we have an officer making four, on an average, four contacts a month. On some months, there's only one contact, that the officer was actually getting out and talking, or making a traffic stop, or making a complaint, or, you know, anything really, we're paying sixteen thousand dollars a month for that.
Where are you seeing these numbers?
In the report that they give us.
How are you determining that they're not physically doing anything with them?
Yeah, because.
Like there's warrants here.
It shows in the report how they reported.
Right. Doing the polling.
And then it shows down on the report that there was officer contact.
No, that indicates that the officer was the one that reported it.
Yeah, versus county nine one one.
This is, if you look at it, I went over this with an officer. So, if you look at it, so like there's suspicious circumstances, there was two, phone call in, that means that I, using myself as an example, called in and made the complaint. Compared to down here below, where they have a traffic stop, the officer actually did that.
But it doesn't mean the officer's not responding to the complaint.
I'm not saying he's not responding. What I'm saying is that he's not making any contact.
Well, but there's still officer contact after he gets the phone call.
Right, but what I'm saying is there is contact from an officer, but the officer's only making himself four stops a month.
That's not necessarily true, um, based on what I know of it, that is, he's written one ticket, because most of the traffic stops that they make don't hold an incident number, it's a call for service number, which you guys aren't seeing in this report.
Mm-hmm. And the only thing that we're seeing here is how it came to dispatch.
Right.
We're not seeing whether or not the officer was dispatched to the site, or whether or not there was a report done on that incident, because...
So what we've been asking for is more clarification. We've asked for that, we haven't gotten that. So what it's looking like, because I'm only doing this because I was asked, you know, so what it's looking at is like the officer was only making very minimal contact for the amount of payments they're getting. So just kind of, we need to do a little more.
Yeah, but if they're getting, if they're getting phone calls and they have to go to ten different houses, he's going to be busy following up on all of those phone calls that dispatch has received versus, you know, trying to stop someone for speeding and this and that, because he might be maybe stuck in one neighborhood for an hour, you know, how can, I don't think that's a very, I think at this point with what we have, I don't think that's a very fair assumption to be making.
Okay, but what I, the only thing I'm saying is that we need to get more detail on this as to what they're actually doing, because our biggest complaint is they're not doing anything.
How much, how much more can we get those?
There is actually, no, there is actually a report that they're working on. So, um, with the ride along that I went on, four hours, not one contact in there with a single person, so.
But you were with?
That was a one-day incident, so, you know.
And you were with?
A sergeant.
A sergeant.
Who was not all industry.
But still, a sergeant is different than a deputy.
We can also see everything that they were doing, all of these officers around here, and there was nothing going on. So for the amount of money, a hundred eighty thousand dollars a year that we're paying, we really need to see exactly what it is they're doing. That's the main reason for bringing this up.
Do you have a proposal for how you want that done?
Well, have an officer show up here, we've been asking that for a year. And I know it's not always convenient, you know, because they might be out doing something, you know, they might be on a call or something, but seriously, that's fine, somebody to take five minutes to come on and say, because anytime we get an officer that comes to them, we say, oh yeah, let's go on. Go.
Not having a report as the report.
Well, he should.
To tell you what they've done, or how many incidents they've responded to.
Well, anytime I've asked the officer about the vandalism that's been going on here in town, they know nothing about it. They're the officer that's here in town that we're paying. How do they not know what the vandalism is that's going on?
Well, but if they didn't respond to a report, you know, if somebody called it in at two in the morning, but we don't have an officer here, or whatever time we don't, that one that's dedicated here during the day might not necessarily know.
We have that officer that's dedicated from six to two though.
They have reported shift change, every shift change, the shift before, reports to the shift coming on, so they know what was going on.
Yeah, but we don't have a, we share a car though.
Only for a few hours.
Yeah, but I mean, after the hours of two AM, we have nothing, so.
Right, but we have times in there where officers are here and they still don't even know what the vandalism is that's going on, so.
Yeah, that's something that you would have to talk to them about, and I know we should have about things like this in the past.
You talk to Wright County on that, because typically, a deputy, not a deputy, but maybe the investigator that will follow up, right, on that Devin? So it'd be an investigator, that could be a detective that's follow up on any incidents that are follow up calls, the road officer is just going to take the initial call. If anything that develops into a case that requires additional investigation is going to be handled by the investigative department or the detectives that would be there, so it wouldn't be on there. So your road officer is not going to have that. Anything further on that one? Monthly activity reports? Jill?
Uh, I attended the personnel meeting on November sixteenth, it was a fairly quick meeting, I think, if I remember. Attended the budget meeting on November twenty-third, attended the town hall meeting on November thirtieth. I came and assisted with the setup for breakfast with Santa, which was put on by the Montrose Days Committee in coordination with the PAC, and then I was at breakfast with Santa on December fifth, and then I attended the Montrose Days Committee meeting last night.
Michelle?
Anything coming up with Montrose Days?
Uh, yes, there is, I think in the flyer that's coming out to the residents, in there there'll be a Bags and Bingo event that's taking place, I think, January twenty-third, and then they're having tentatively a couple of fish fries, I think that'll be more solidified at the January meeting, but they're tentatively set for February twenty-sixth and March fourth are kind of the contenders right now for that.
Uh, I attended, I attended the open forum, town hall meeting, quick and simple, um, council meetings, Park and Rec. And at Park and Rec meeting, we discussed Christmas carry that's coming up on December twenty-third from six to eight, we will be meeting here at the community center. We're asking that voiceouts, crossouts, the churches, anybody really that wants to come, come join us, hoping to have Santa there. And then, uh, what else are we discussing? Skate day is also the twenty-third, which is the same day as Montrose Days Bingo, or not Bingo.
Bingo days.
Bingo bags, um, different times, different crowds, so it should be, you know, no big deal there.
I attended town hall, the personnel committee meeting, the fire department meetings, the regional fire department meeting, Park and Rec meeting, several voiceout meetings, Beyond the L Ribbon meeting, uh, VFW meetings, they have moved their Christmas and Bingo to the January seventeenth, uh, special budget meeting, and then breakfast with Santa. Also, the church groups are going to sponsor a food drop, which will be both vegetables as well as what's available for vegetables, as well as non-perishables on the twenty-second, I believe that's four to eight.
Four to seven.
Four to seven, yeah, four to seven.
Um, I attended the personnel committee meeting, the budget workshop, open forum, the Beyond the L Ribbon meeting, breakfast with Santa, um, and then we also served pie and ice cream to the VFW for Beyond the L Ribbon, and had, um, Thanksgiving baskets for the vets that we had them picked up, and then this Thursday, we'll be doing cookies for the vets as well.
Time on the cookies.
How many baskets did you guys get, Lloyd?
Um, we got a total of, we put together forty baskets.
Yep.
And we gave out most of them, I think we had a few left over.
Time on the cookies.
Um, time on cookies, six to eight, for all the vets and their families.
You have it here?
Yes, here.
Lloyd? Just regular council meetings and special, a couple of special meetings, and of course the town hall meeting, the other meetings. That's about it.
Is there a trailer that's going to come up at all?
Did January eighteen? Okay. Public works, sale of the GMC truck.
Good evening, Mayor Council, for tonight is, we're asking the council to authorize us to, uh, sell a nineteen ninety-two GMC pickup that's been on our fleet for twenty years, um, so we're needing a motion for that.
Any discussion? Motion?
I make a motion to approve, Public Works to sell the nineteen ninety-two GMC truck.
Second?
I'll second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. So. Thank you. Personnel committee, uh, member sixteen meeting.
Yummy?
Yes.
All right, so the first thing we discussed was the vacation carryover for Wendy and Sean. They were looking to carry over additional hours due to the inability to use enough this year with the situation we were in. The concession stamp policy was again brought to Personnel Committee, we again suggested some more changes, they will be brought back next month. And then there was just a few items discussed in other business, one being, um, adding a commission member appointment policy and position description for each of the city commissions. We discussed the volunteer week and dinner, and then, uh, the Personnel Committee is recommending to allow the city office to close at eleven on Christmas Eve and then be closed on Christmas Day to the council.
And on the volunteers, we wanted to bring that into a budgeted item, um, so that will be a, to recognize all of our volunteers, as well as to get some additional input from our volunteer organizations as well for the city and how we can help support each other. And that would be a dinner, and then we've got a budgeted item on that. That's the recommendation.
Can you? Just clarify that, we're still continuing with the volunteer of the year.
Definitely not when we recognize all volunteer organizations rather than recognizing just one.
We do recognize all the volunteers, and it was actually discussed, because this is part of Park and Rec. It's always been in October due to the fact that it was the HCP grant that got the money to go to the dinner, and then this past year, the reason why it continued in October is because last year we didn't have it, so we wanted to continue it, so we did it again in October, with discussion moving it into April during the volunteer week, but, um, continuing on recognizing the one volunteer that stands out and giving certificates to all of the other organizations and/or volunteers that are nominated. So I think that we still need to recognize that one volunteer of the year. And I think that, um, does it stand yet? Something about council doing this? That the council holds it?
That it'd be hosted by the council, that maybe we could use our food vendor license.
It was always hosted by the council and city staff, it was only when the HCP then got that grant, otherwise it's always been by the city staff and council. In April, it went to October when we did the HCP meeting, so, but it was only like three times that we held it in October, in conjunction with the HCP meeting. So moving it back, now that we don't have the grant anymore, moving it back to having and having the council and the staff do it, that way it can be budgeted properly through the council like we've always budgeted in the past.
And the concern was more to recognize all the volunteer organizations rather than just single out one individual volunteer.
But there is a volunteer that goes above and beyond, and all organizations are invited to attend and drink a guest or two, and then to be recognized, and it was discussed during the Park and Rec meeting that, um, the nominated person gets that plaque, you know, that is, it's, anybody can nominate anybody, it's not just somebody from an organization or whatever, it's put out everywhere, Facebook, the city page, everywhere, anybody can nominate anybody for that volunteer of the year, and then we also would recognize everybody else with a certificate saying, you know what, we still appreciate everything you do, if it wasn't for you, you know, we couldn't run as a city.
Do we do certificates last one year?
We did not, because it was, um...
Decided not to.
Of, yeah.
I wanted to, but the response was no.
Yep. A few of us wanted to, but then a few said not to, and so I'm just kind of wondering why this is even brought up, because there really hasn't been a problem in the past year.
I had two complaints that came to me, both anonymous in reference to singling out one person as the volunteer of the year.
Well, there's a, you know...
I mean, I wish I'd known who they were so I could discuss the reasons with them, but they both came to me anonymously that were concerned about singling out one person in the vote.
Every town has a volunteer of the year or a business of the year, I think we should even do a business of the year, you know, a business that always is also willing to help and recognize and donate or whatever, we've always, if you look around, that happens everywhere. You have a volunteer of the year, you have a business of the year, we don't, I mean, because one person, which, that anonymous person, I have that letter here, is stating that this, there was a certain person that was not recognized, that is false information, because that person has been recognized on April twenty-eighth, May twelfth, June ninth, August eleventh, September eighth, and then again, April twenty-fifth, June eighth, and September fourteenth. So this, or this letter right here, anonymous letter, that says that this person was not recognized or invited, is false information. And why we are looking at anonymous letters to change the whole format that we've had would no problem. with no problems, we never look at anonymous letters. And we have to have correct information in order to change the things that we already have. So, that is all false information.
I think we need to look at doing more and recognize all the organizations.
I agree with that. Yes. I do agree to that point. And like I said, we do rec, and if you go and look through all of our council minutes, almost every meeting, we recognize an organization for whatever they've done. You know, like right now, we would recognize the Yellow Ribbon for donating and doing their baskets. So every organization is always recognized. But there's always, there's always one person that always goes above and beyond. If there wasn't, there wouldn't be nominations.
So, are you coming?
I just think, you know, I lost my train of thought, but we need to keep going what we've been doing. And Pat Plouffe has been recognized many times in year 2014 and 2015. I don't know what, and we've never, ever recognized a letter that came in anonymous to start with.
I agree.
Then you shouldn't have been recognized.
There were two letters that came in, and I said they were anonymous.
And they shouldn't have been recognized.
And what we looked at was, we want to move it to April, so we got it the way it always was, and we can recognize, do more to recognize all the organizations that support this community.
We had given off...
And frankly, the Volunteer meeting I attended, there was little recognition of all the organizations.
It wasn't, right.
But it sucked the organizations if they weren't...
To attend.
But they were all invited.
Yeah, they all were invited. I understand, Sylvia, what I'm saying is, we'd like to get some better feedback between them to allow the organizations to tell us what they're doing.
They were all given these letters to fill out their nominee. There was three nominees that came out, two or three nominees that came out of your household.
Okay.
And Greg, there should never be a council member...
I don't disagree with that at all.
There should never be a...
What I do disagree with is that...
...mayor or council member...
The one thing I do disagree with, and I notice of it, was, and this is for Park and Rec, is that it has to be a person who resides in Montrose.
That's right.
That's a concern.
And it hasn't been?
No, that's a concern, because there are lots of volunteers that don't reside in Montrose.
Well, you definitely don't reside in Montrose.
And they should be recognized.
They should be, yes. Yes, it is like, it kind of goes back to, for reasons, you know, saying that person that helps out in Montrose, we're now going to recognize them as their volunteer, but we can't have them on a commission. We have to figure out which way we're going to go. They want to be on commissions and help volunteer more, but we're not allowing that. But we want to recognize the fact that they're volunteering. So, if they want to come in and volunteer and be on a commission, if, I've always said, if you're a part of District 877 Montrose, whether you're Mary's Real Township or whatever, you should be allowed to be on any commission, be recognized, be acknowledged, and whatever. I mean, that's what is making Montrose, Montrose. But there's still that person that goes above and beyond if there wasn't.
That's why I recommended we look at our commissions as well, and the descriptions of those.
That they, I know, that's why Park and Rec, that's why we brought that up. Yes. Is bringing that person in, but then I was turned down to say, no, we can't bring that person in. Even though they volunteer and attend everything, we don't want them on that commission to actually make decisions.
Because the decision hasn't been changed.
Well, it needs to be changed, and we discussed that at a meeting, maybe even two ago, and we haven't changed that yet. So, I think it should just stay the way it is, there's no problems with it. I don't think the council should be involved in it, because then everybody just comes back and the council, we continue to have that anonymous people judging the volunteer. Because that was quite a bit of discussion, actually.
Yeah, I don't feel that City Council should...
I don't think we should...
I don't think they should be voting, but I don't see any issue with us being the ones that are hosting the dinner.
They didn't.
Well, it makes sense too if we're using this in the council. And then we, as a commission, can get recognition and not have to be doing all the work for it.
Right.
Whereas, because we can't be recognized as a volunteer.
You would think.
But as Sylvia said, we wouldn't then have that conflict of interest, just be standing in that.
So in the budget that we just approved, the volunteer expenses of $1,000, isn't that budgeted in there? So...
You don't need $1,000.
No, that's just all over.
Yeah.
For Skate Day, all of that stuff, it's $1,000, so that we don't have to transfer it from Skate Day to the vacuum, whatever. So it's just budgeted in there as $1,000, but I'm still saying...
$1,000 is a special vote for 500 and 500, if you remember correctly.
It's $1,000 budgeted in council under volunteer expenses.
Right.
Because part that's for Skate Day, everything is under Park and Rec.
Right, right. Because Volunteer Dinner is under that, the council has $1,000 for the Volunteer Dinner.
Right. And, and you know what, I'm okay with whoever hosting it, but I'm still saying we need to recognize that one person as Volunteer of the Year, just like every other town does without any problems and issues like Montrose has. And just still say, you know what, you're doing a great job, but everybody else is too. You know, I just, it's never been a problem before. And like I said, if we're going to get a letter, that's got to be facts. Because in this letter, it says that this person was not invited, but they were, because it was discussed as the dinner planning of the actual meal was discussed in accordance to that person, what that person here eats. So that person was invited.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's just...
But how does a single person get nominated? I mean, we're talking about these organizations nominating someone.
Because we...
But how did, how did one person get bypassed?
It's on the internet, it was on Facebook.
Yeah, but not everybody's on the internet and all that, Facebook and all that stuff.
Go to City Hall.
It's on, it's on City Hall, it goes in newsletters, it goes on Facebook, it goes, it goes everywhere, you know?
But see, tonight, we're trying to emphasize organizations nominating.
That's the significant where you get most of the nominations from, is from the organizations.
Right, and that's...
But it was listed and mentioned.
So this one individual doesn't belong to an organization, and he don't get nominated?
He could get nominated.
He could get nominated, but what happened? Because this one individual could have been nominated by a person that's in Park and Rec, because they're related, so they could have been nominated. So, I mean, just to say that they weren't nominated, it's a hope, I mean, anybody can nominate anybody, you know? And however it may be.
That's okay, that's what we should emphasize, not just organizations because...
And it is, and it is. I personally, I personally took it upon myself to go on every organization that, Facebook and the, any webpage, City of Montrose, The Next Door and stuff, and I said, if you know of any exceptional person that has gone above and beyond, that you feel would be nominated and should be nominated for Volunteer of the Year, please submit, and we put the link and the actual form out there. So, and as the date approached, I keep going and updating and saying, don't forget, Volunteer of the Year is coming, any event. I always make a point to say, what's coming up, don't forget this, if you know somebody, so it's out there. I'm done.
Is there a consensus on having the Volunteer of the Year?
I believe it is, it is, I guess.
Is there any objection to changing it to April and having a meeting in budgeted item for the Volunteer Meeting?
Under City Council.
Under City Council budget.
So we plan the dinner in April, but we still vote Volunteer of the Year. I don't care with that.
Okay.
But...
We're still going to have the dinner, but it's going to be during the Volunteer Week in April. We still will nominate a Volunteer of the Year, and also recognize all of the organizations or individuals that do something in Montrose.
But they had this, they had their choice to do this.
They did, but moving forward, that's, right? Is that what we're saying? Right?
I'm sorry.
Okay, just confirming.
So it's just to change the date?
Pretty much. And that it will...
And then respond to that.
Instead of Park and Rec planning it.
And have an actual budget alignment for it, okay? Park and Rec's still going to be the ones that are going to be planning it, but it'll actually have a budget item, and you can use the council's food license for the, you know, for the food, if there's a public gap.
What if they're invited? Greg, they do not need a food license to do it, if it's by invitation.
If it's by indication, no.
Right, so we don't need the city food license, is what she's saying?
But I think we should have it anyway if you have people coming who aren't invited, like if someone might come that's not invited.
Well, they shouldn't come if they're not invited.
Well, it could happen, because like I said, I do have it posted.
Right.
So, just to be safe, I guess.
And they hold their Volunteer Week.
Right.
And they will look at doing a little more to recognize the volunteer organizations who need to be, and do more with that. And I think we also need to get more of their side of it, what they've got planned, so that we can help with that process.
Right, and that's...
And we work better together.
That's our quarterly Volunteer Meeting.
Mm-hmm, and that's working well, and I think that's a big plus, because we're getting a lot out of it, but people that don't go to that don't necessarily see that. There are a few organizations that go to that all the time, but not all of them do, so it's good to hear those organizations can say what they're doing.
January 25th. I have the date. January 25th.
So on January 25th, we meet with all of the volunteer organizations and/or volunteers, and we do have an updated list, because during the Volunteer Dinner, we got an updated list from that to send out to more, you know, because I don't think we had, I don't count on Wizner, so we got his information, so, and the Girl Scouts were there, so different, so more emails will go out to everybody saying, come and join us, or... And then we'll ask them how they would like to envision moving forward.
Okay, vacation carryover for Sean and Wendy, not to exceed 40 hours until next year.
Additional 40 hours.
Additional 40 hours.
So what are they, what are you looking to carry over right now?
I think we're both down into the 30s now, so we're both 40 extra.
What do you mean, like 32 hours of vacation left?
Well, we can carry 120 forward, but we both have more than 120 hours right now, with everything that's, I mean, we just didn't get a real, we weren't able to get our vacation in this year, so we're asking to be able to carry that extra...
40 hours.
30, yeah, up to 40, but we're both down to the 30, so it's not quite 40 hours beyond the 120.
So, we need a motion to carry, allow up to 40 hours of carryover?
I'll make a motion to allow up to 40 extra hours of carryover.
Second?
Hold on a second.
Allison?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. And then also, reference to the City Office being closed on, at 11:00 on Christmas Eve, making that a short day, that helps us with our time off, is that correct, Maggie?
Um, yes, council, mayor and council, so looking back at the holidays over the year, there were some holidays that fell on Friday, which means that staff got, I think it was four hours on that day, and so that puts staff at a total of 71 hours for that, for the year. Typically, you get 80, or 80 is budgeted for the year, and so if you, if staff is just asking if we can swap it, since this one falls on a Friday again, it's four hours, but if you like swap it so that then you get the four hours on Christmas Eve and then the nine hours for Christmas, then it would total up to that 80 hours for the year.
Any questions in the discussion? Can I have the memo that Maggie prepared for discussion? Need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to allow City Offices to close on 11:00 on Christmas Eve.
Second?
I'll second.
Lloyd is the second. Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Office will be closed Christmas Eve at 11:00 a.m. and close Christmas. Moving on, Park and Rec.
I just, I have a question, Mayor, I'm the Personnel Staff. Concession stand policy, is this not going to change to city buildings policies? Because we talked about the concession stand, but also lumping in and changing the appointments of Boy Scouts for the staff stands?
We'll be doing one for all.
Right, so can we put city buildings?
Well, there will be a concession stand policy, and then there will be one for the other buildings, because they're run differently.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, Park and Rec.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We called the meeting to order on December 7th at 5:30. Approved the agenda. Approved the November meeting minutes. Master Park and Trail Plan, we got it two weeks, you should have it in your packet. Capital Improvement, we put to January 4th. The archery practice range, we put that to the fore, to the next meeting, January 4th. Skate Day, January 23rd. Don't look like we're going to have anything. I'm sorry.
Oh, I might.
Okay, and Christmas decoration contest is discussed, and that will be held, judging will be held on Monday, December 21st, between 6:00 and 8:00. Okay. Regional Park upgrade, in, we discussed it, and the National Guard and city staff about the regional park for 2017, I think it is, right?
One year, yeah.
Holiday Charlie, December 23rd. Easter egg hunt, I don't know, we discussed it, but I don't know if we're having it.
I think we tabled it to January.
And then we have a motion to put your meeting at 6:40.
Excellent. Any discussion on the minutes? Let's talk about the Parks and Trails Plan update. Would you like me to do that, Sylvia?
I don't have anything.
I think you would want to let that discussion begin with.
Mr. Mayor and Council, before you tonight is a updated version of the Master Park and Trails Plan that our Park and Rec Commission has spent several diligent months updating, and this is a culmination of effort of those months, and I've been trusting that the Mayor and Council have took time to read this, because it's approximately 50 pages long, and I really don't want to go page by page unless I have to. You know? So we're looking for a motion. There was a couple maps added this afternoon that didn't make press time back on Thursday. I entrusted you all got those also.
Yes.
And that is part of the updated plan mapped out, and we're seeking a motion for approval of this updated plan, so we can start working on our CIP list, which is going to be moving forward in 2016. So we get a motion to approve this tonight.
Discussion? Motion to approve Park and Rec Trail Plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the Park and Rec Master Trail.
Second?
I'll second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0 to approve the Park and Rec Trail Plan is updated, dated December 2015.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Department?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, in your packet is the November activity report. Any questions on that? Then the other item that I have is the two thousand fifteen Assistance to Firefighters Grant Authorization Submit Application. Each year, three months puts on a grant for fire departments to apply for. Um, I'm requesting authorization to apply for this grant. More than likely, what I'd be applying for is what they're considering a micro grant, which is twenty-five thousand dollar federal share up to. There's a five percent local match, and that's based on our population. And I'm not exactly sure what exact item we're gonna be doing with it yet, but we'll be developing that as we move forward with it, so. I just need authorization to.
A motion to approve Fire Department Application for FEMA Grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the grant.
Second?
I'll second.
I vote aye, Lloyd, aye.
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh.
And then the one other thing I have is the official start date of the three new firefighters was the tenth of December of this year. So they're now onboard and starting to respond to calls and trainings and stuff with us, so.
What is that, what number does that bring us up?
Brings us up to twenty-six active. Yep.
Some reason, or ones be able to be around these?
One movie, yes.
Okay. Still looking for that Golden Nugget that's available every day, all day.
That'd be nice.
Excellent.
Yep.
Engineer. You, Mayor and Council, I have two items on the agenda for you this evening. The first one is relating to a portion of the capital improvement plan that we've been discussing. The portion of the capital improvement plan that's under discussion this evening is on Second Street South from County Route Twelve or Buffalo Avenue. It is blocked right out in front of here. You have one block from County Route Twelve over to Center Avenue. And then from Center, on Center Avenue from Second Street all the way down to US Highway Twelve. That's actually County Road Sixty, that's a county road that's been that way for over a cover. County currently pays the city each year an amount to maintain those roads, so that the city can just maintain it, it's more efficient for them to do it. Anyhow, this improvements in that area has been on the city's capital improvement plan for at least ten years, I know. Ever since I've been working in Montrose personally. It's an area that has very old infrastructure underneath it, and so it's been, been on a need, been on a capital improvement for a long time. We recently got some discussions with the county. They would be open to the possibility of doing some funding with that on their own in exchange for turning the roads back to the city as a city road. And I think really that would be a win-win situation for both the city and the county. The city gets some funding to do the upgrades, and then the county can get rid of that little section of County Road that really doesn't function as a county road per se. So anyway, the first step really to request funding is to put a formal letter together to the county requesting that they evaluate this project in their capital improvement plan upgrades each year that they do, and hopefully get it into their capital improvement plan at some point. So then, based on what they have available for funding, and when they can put it into their capital improvement plan, then the city can react accordingly on our CIP. So, what you have in front of you is a letter basically summarizing what I just mentioned to the county engineer requesting that they put this project into our CIP. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve sending that out.
Got a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, okay, to send the capital improvement plan notification letter at county.
Second?
I'll second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries five oh. Uh, do we have any timeline on that, Justin?
Pardon me?
Do we have any timeline on that? Any idea?
Um, I do not know for sure where they're at in their, I think they typically evaluate the CIPs in the past.
Okay, because I know there's some issues with the apron in front of the Fire Department as well, with the drop off, is there, right, Kevin?
Yeah, there is.
There is some urgency there is.
I'm guessing as far as funding of it, as far as, you know, it would be no sooner than at least two years old. Um, any other question on that?
No.
I'll move on to the second item there, is a formal request to MinDOT to reduce the speed limit on Highway Twenty-Five south of town, or within city limits, but on the south end of town. Currently, down by Rock Brook, the wastewater treatment plant area, the speed limit reduces from fifty-five miles per hour to forty-five miles per hour just north of that intersectional little ways. And then, another, I don't know, halfway up or so roughly, it reduces down to thirty miles per hour. Uh, the concern of that is that, as you guys are all aware, there's bicycle, bicyclist pedestrians that use Highway Twenty-Five to get from Rock Brook back and forth to Highway Twelve. And there's no shoulder there, there's no pedestrian facilities. Staff thought it would be a good idea to put in a formal request to MinDOT to evaluate that speed limit and see if they would possibly reduce that speed limit in there just to try and improve the pedestrian safety.
So we'd like to see it thirty to the south fence of the city property there, just south of Seventh Street.
Yes, some, basically, that's Seventh Street somewhere near it.
Okay.
Yeah, but going right to the bottom of the hill there, reduce thirty down there? Because it takes a while for the semis to slow down.
Right.
And then forty-five out to the three properties that are on the right-hand side there, just the one that's probably annexed in the city property. So it would be forty-five out to that, is that correct?
Yeah, it'll be part of their speed study that they'll look at.
They'll look at.
Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of saved matter, to be honest with you, but we can, you know, we can request it or indicate our concerns.
Yeah.
And we thought it'd be a good idea to do that.
Absolutely. Any motion on that one as well?
Yes, I do need a motion on that for the minutes.
Motion to pursue a speed change on County Road Twenty, or County Highway Twenty-Five, State Highway Twenty-Five, south of State Highway Twelve. And then redo that speed study and reduce the speed there for safety reasons. And then be, first, is there a second?
I'll second.
Got you, Lloyd. Lloyd's seconded. Uh, Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh, let's see if we can get the speed reduced.
Hey, Justin, you said we request that from MinDOT, right?
Yes.
Okay, is there cost involved with that?
There's no cost in the city road.
Okay.
Just for, just, yeah, just for a little.
Okay. Moving on to new business, the sewer access charge. Any discussion on that one?
There is a correction on that resolution. Where it says, on the very bottom, it says, "We have further resolved," it says sixteen hundred to the water treatment plant, it should be wastewater treatment. That's our SAC charge, a charge of immobility permits. And sixteen hundred goes to the wastewater plant expansion, and thirty-four hundred go to the sanitary sewer system. Just trying to stay, keep our, on there for our maintenance.
Any discussion? Motion to approve twenty fifteen twenty-eight?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty fifteen dash twenty-eight.
Second?
I'll second.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
And Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh, twenty fifteen twenty-eight. Joint Powers Agreement?
Um, Mayor and Council, I can try and explain this. So this is a resolution or a contract approving the state and Minnesota Joint Powers Agreement with the city of Montrose on behalf of its city attorney. So essentially, you're approving that the city attorney has access to like records and through the Minnesota Department of Public Safety and the Bureau of Criminal Abahinging to use their systems. So it just kind of grants them the access to that information.
Any discussion?
And just to add on this, Mayor and Council, this is the prosecuting attorney affiliated with the county. So not my office whatsoever, but I have been somewhat familiar with this agreement in other cities that I work with. Starts with prosecutors having access to additional information, so it's pretty boy or play in my opinion.
Any discussion? Motion to approve twenty fifteen thirty.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty, the Joint Powers Agreement.
Second?
I'll second that.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Lloyd, sidewalk maintenance.
Yeah, the last storm we had here, the snow we had, I had several calls about people not shoveling their sidewalks. And they were wondering what the city ordinance was on that. I talked to Sarah, and she said that we're gonna have an article in the newsletter this, coming out this week now. Or they don't know, a week from, ten days ago, but, anyway. How do we, maybe Sean, you can answer this, how do we find out which ones aren't shoveled or anything? Do you guys usually tell the city and the hall and?
Typically, Lloyd, in most common years, when we receive a complaint is when we usually go out and look. Uh, we don't really go out and, so to say, look for people that haven't shoveled their sidewalks. We've got plenty of other things to do besides that. Then we do, once we do see that it hasn't been taken care of according to ordinance, a letter will go out stating the fact that you're in violation of the ordinance, please correct it as soon as possible. And if not, the city will take it upon ourselves to go out there and take care of it, and there will be a fee applied to it.
But this, you know, with our trucks driving around town, if they should have listened to something, they could report it to, right?
We certainly could, yes.
Yeah, I think we should start doing that, because by the time you go into your process, call City Hall and stuff, it'll be snowy, it'll be melted, or it'll be too late.
There is, there is a certain bookkeeping process that we do have to follow on that, according to state law, for the city can technically charge money to do that service. And however, we still can go out and identify those issues before we see, receive a complaint, too.
Can we plow some sidewalks and not others?
We do. The reason for that is to allow on more collector, major collector streets, the city has adopted the policy to where it will go out and do that to aid in pedestrian traffic for schoolchildren trying to get on the bus, and routes to school of that nature. But on the secondary streets and things like that, we try to limit up to the homeowners to take care of it.
Yeah, because I had a complaint about that last year, that we did some and we didn't do others.
That's the reason why.
Yeah, and I figured too, we should either do it all, or just don't do any of that for now.
Well, if the council wants to spend that money to do them all, we certainly can.
No.
We try to do as much as we can with what we've got to ensure that kids have a safe way to walk to school or to the school bus. And I do believe we go and be above and beyond other communities in the same size of what they would do for their school kids. And where do you draw the line, because we're, that's really up to it, so.
So what we do, sorry.
Go ahead. Just about any sidewalk though is gonna involve school children. My, I have about three complaints from, by Seventh down there, Seventh down in the north. And, you know, those school kids too, they walk to the corner there, but when it comes to where it's icy and not shoveling, then they gotta go out in the street, you know.
Well, if you ever watch School Kids, Lloyd, you can shovel the sidewalk every day of the year, and they're still gonna walk in the street. I have noticed that.
Brass.
We'll get Michelle, did you have something?
Uh, so when we do get a complaint that the sidewalk is not being shoved, and they call the city, and then, you know, you sent your letter for not complying within, I think it's twenty-four hours, and you go out and shovel, plow that sidewalk for them, how do we go about assessing the fee to them? What's the process?
Our fees get, states set, we charge a hundred dollars an hour.
Do we, okay, so say you're there for ten minutes.
It's pro-rated.
Right, do we actually charge?
We do.
And do we bill them then, or how do we?
We either bill them, or give an opportunity to pay the invoice, so if they don't pay, it goes on the property taxes.
How do we see that, you know, if, so say, because there's a consistent one every year over in Hill Street that you guys have to go plow, how do we see that they are being billed, and, or do we, where does that go?
There's paper trail for all that. True accounts payable and receivable, and we submit invoices.
We should make sure that if we get complaints, that they go to the city as well, so they can start the process.
Right, so if we, it's unsolicited, it's our. That we forward it to.
I just wish there was some way to speed it up, you know.
Unfortunately, we can't. Same way with mowing in the summertime for people who don't mow their yards. A number of years ago with the foreclosures, they did modify the law somewhat to speed it up, but when I first started, you had to send three individual notices to that particular property owner before you could use public funds to take care of private property. And they streamlined it a bit, that a bit, to where you just send one notice, and it's not taken care of, then you can go in and use public funds to maintain private property. So there has been some modifications over the years to streamline that.
So, with the notification that's going out in newsletter, that's their one, correct?
It could be interpreted that way, yes.
Is it on the front page there?
It's usually, I mean, it takes a good whole half of the page and all that, as a reminder.
Yeah, but it's a bit, it'll somebody can just take, throw it, you know, look at it. Okay, that was my concern. Well, certainly, look at that, that streamlined a bit.
Upcoming meetings? Updates on meetings?
We have a personnel meeting.
Yeah. Motion, November, so, motion on November, or December, my first.
That's all, are you guys doing personnel, or you canceled that off, you mean?
We're gonna personnel this forward to, yeah, I think it's posted.
I don't think they voted.
I thought I sent something off to the camera.
I'm glad it was gonna be.
Yeah, I had sent an email to, we're looking at doing the union negotiations, and then we looked at moving the personnel meeting forward, you know, like one o'clock to three, and then, you know, you have three in the.
I think it was two o'clock, two to three was personnel.
Three on the personnel meeting, three until we finish with the union meeting, yeah.
A lot of three hours of the union negotiations.
Yes.
And both of those need to be posted, because there may be a forum in both of those.
That's mainly fun, John.
Does anyone have any problems with the personnel meeting, two to three? And Lloyd and Jill, you're good for the union negotiation, three to six. And then the five is twelve thirty. I figured that, yeah. I wanted to say what. Okay, anything else? All right, let's move to open forum, Devin? All right, let's move building forum. Evan? Good evening.
I was kind of worried what the, you know, the review process was for the city clerk finalists, there's three finalists, one was a Lori Young from Riverside, Iowa, and if you do a quick check on there, you come back with this press release from Lautter of Iowa concerning the city of Riverside. If you read through that report, search in to the word deputy, you come back that they received vacation payout, deputy clerk received one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for eighty-four hours, payouts are not allowed under city policy. And certain disbursements were not approved by the city council. They looked at four youngs who were not approved, including a five hundred dollar cellphone stipend for the deputy clerk, which, you know, Lori Young was at the time of this report, that one was specifically denied by the council. Their city personnel did not clock out for a half-hour lunch each day, as a result, who paid for their lunchtime, which is inconsistent with their city policy and the practice for non-city employees. Deputy clerk did not receive a half-hour lunch on one hundred and fifty-four days, which was seventy-seven hours, it cost one thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars, and the list kind of goes on. There were payroll advances that were not tracked, ensuring they were repaid in full. And then there was an issue with payroll accrual rate, so I just wanted, Mayor, through the Personnel Committee, how did this person become one of the three finalists? Did you actually do a background investigation?
The background was conducted by an outside organization, which is what the council voted on.
So the background was done before you put them forward as finalists?
The background investigation was by the private organization that we hired to do the search.
So I mean, you could probably find this in five, ten minutes, you know, just Google.
It was deemed that the council should not be involved in that hiring process that we outsourced it, that's why it was outsourced, it relied upon that organization to do the background investigation, and that was done.
So would you say there was a failure in that process?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe during the interview, she's the one, she told you, she's the one who started the investigation.
I know she was the one.
She was the one that started.
Yeah, so it was prior to her working there.
But she's the one that called for the investigation.
She did.
She did, but I don't think that's his question, I think what his question is, is how did she get to be a finalist with all of that in the background?
I don't know if that's her back, if it's her previous deputy clerk.
Previous.
But didn't that firm give you any information on the background?
We had all the information.
They had all the information for the background?
We had to do, because it was in that binder.
Yes, is this, this is the same one?
Not, that's, that's information specifically.
This is the same person, I think, I could run, that had twenty-four outstanding balances, is that correct?
I would be guessing. It's maybe correct.
So then I think that, yes, so how did she become a finalist to run the city of Montrose with millions of dollars when she's in debt, with twenty-four different, how did you guys, is that, I'm not sure, that is the question, and I could be wrong, but is that what you're asking? How did we become a finalist when we had all of that problems? How, how did that come about?
So you're saying personally, if you get into a lot of debt, you should not be allowed to get into a job because of that?
No, not paying, not paying.
Not paying or an inability to pay it.
But even though, I mean.
So just because you have.
You guys should have had that information, and she should never have been one of the three, or the four.
Because she was late on her own personal payments, we shouldn't have considered her?
Yeah, but you allowed that stuff carried over here.
Okay. First of all, first of all, when they got together, the background checks were not done until after, so the three of them got together, Jill and Greg and Gary Weiers.
They made a decision based on qualifications.
They made a decision and picked the four qualifying candidates based on their qualifications on the paper. The background checks were not conducted until after that was done, and they were only conducted then on those four candidates.
And one.
One backed out, so you interviewed three people, so those background checks were not presented until you all received them in your binder. So you all interviewed the people on those background checks all at the same time, they didn't see those background checks or anything until you guys, you all saw at the same time. They were not done on these people prior to picking those candidates. All it was, was the applications laying in front of them, yes, they need qualifications or no, they don't.
And then Gary's requirements based on.
And then the other company, David Drone Associates, then did the background checks and all the other stuff.
Melissa's person, deputy clerk, before January twenty fourteen, and the report covered July first, twenty thirteen through June thirty, twenty fourteen.
Yeah, they did all the background checks, I mean, David Drone Associates conducted all of it, so the city's, we didn't have anything to do with it.
And with that, it's interesting, even after the background checks, there was still a council member that approved to possibly hire the person you had questioned.
But, I don't know, I might, I might, not twice in time.
Would be then as amazing, watering the bridge, because we hired.
They hired somebody else. But the whole, the whole pot.
We didn't spend a lot of money on that.
We spent eighty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, and that was a requirement that we outsourced it.
Would that be worth offering that up to them?
Well, I mean, we're hearing it now, aren't we? It was council requirement that we outsourced it. We bring David Drone.
I did bring it up.
Also, in the interview, she reported that she was the one who brought that investigation that you're reading now.
So I mean, looks like.
An investigation, and I don't know that it's specifically that one, but.
And the day of the interviews, the day of the interviews, I did ask the firm about this, and they did not find anything, so they did not do a thorough, because he knew nothing about that.
Or he denied knowing it.
He may have known, but he denied knowing anything about it the day that we did interview them.
I just, you know, I think that's kind of important, that it, that it came up before the person became a finalist, and it didn't have to come from a citizen, you know what I mean?
One taken.
I was just wondering, I've asked a couple times about the twenty thousand dollar savings, you know, by going from within, and if we had to hire outside, would you have a little job description? But in turn, we did a new job description, and I still haven't gotten anything from you on that, I've asked probably twice. I got your communication documents with the local union council, sixty-five, and that still doesn't quite answer my question on the twenty thousand and all the job description. I'm just wondering why I haven't heard back from the mayor. This is probably the longest standing request, because I don't know why it was brought up, I really asked for that information.
And I explained that when you asked in the last open forum, okay, when we hired from within, we were able to promote someone from within, which meant we did not have to outsource, but the cost of outsourcing, that was part of it. The other cost that we were able to promote from within would be a lower rate than hiring someone as an administrator, which was also a cost saving.
So I haven't seen information on that.
The actual facts and figures is what you want.
Yeah, I'd like to see, you know, like, paperwork. I saw your communications with the.
All the paperwork was, we're, oh, we discussed in the personnel meeting.
So you never put anything in writing?
I didn't put anything in writing of that, because what we discussed in the personnel.
With the union negotiator? Was that with the union negotiator?
No, that had nothing to do with the union.
So you thought they would have approved that, though?
That had nothing to do with the union, Evan. You're talking to donuts and apples.
Job description.
The job description?
They just said the twenty thousand was because you're going to have to hire somebody that.
There was a significant savings to not hire an outside firm in order to do the hiring process, okay? That was eighty-five hundred dollars, but the bid we had was ten grand, okay? And the cost that we had from the other city was ten to fifteen thousand dollars to do an outside hire, by an outside firm. That was a savings if we did it as an inside hire. The council decided not to do an inside hire, the council decided to do an outside firm in order to do the hiring process.
But then you also said it would be under the old job description, and that changed.
We said that the person that would go into that would be under the old job description if we hired from within, but we would be able to have a different cost structure, because we'd hire with a lower rate than if we hired outside, that was considered a savings as well.
My understanding is that if you hired outside, you'd have to be under the old job description, that's what I remember you saying.
Hiring from the outside, I don't know if we did that or not, but we actually redid the job description because it was deemed to be changed from administrator to a clerk president, and that was a change that happened after that.
And that was.
That was part of the savings as well, to change it from a clerk, from an administrator to clerk president as well.
But I guess, you know, that was all their part, was getting that information, indicating that if we hired outside, it'd have to be under the old job description, but the job description didn't change with that. Now, I was still waiting for information on that, so that's why I brought it up to go tonight.
Okay, we decided to change that because we didn't hire, the issue was whether or not, if that person was hired as a union person, whether they had to keep the same job description, but as a council, we decided to change that to change it to a different job description, so we didn't have a city administrator, we had a clerk president.
So in essence, you were able to change the job description either way, where you hired.
We did, we changed the job description, based on council decision.
So in other words, the information changed after you said that in the first place, is that kind of what you're saying?
Yes, you can say that, yeah.
Okay, all right, I just, I've been waiting for that, and I haven't got it, so I thought I'd ask you that.
So do you have what you need now? It was all verbal, there's nothing written, there's no paper trail on that.
I think, you know, something like that might be beneficial at a paper trail.
There's no paper trail on that, it was all verbal, we discussed it in the personnel meeting.
But there's also an aspect of, you know, savings by not having the person in the job.
Did you just record my conversation?
I believe it's being recorded right here.
And you've got, you've got a trail on it that'll succeed to that, right?
But then, but there's also an aspect of the position being open longer, that there would be a savings from that, so while you waited to hire from the outside, so it wouldn't necessarily be a complete twenty thousand.
Actually, the position being open longer didn't save anything.
Don't think so.
It's basically oversavings money overall, but being open a shorter period would have cost us more, because we're still under the requirement to pay the previous administrator based on that settlement, as well as pay the new hire, whatever they got hired on, so that would not be a cost saving.
Through, that was like June or something, was it?
May of twenty sixteen.
May of twenty sixteen.
May of twenty sixteen.
That was not a full five zero, just, you know, to continue the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any acknowledgements?
I have some. Park and Rec for their hard work, I'm putting them together, and their hours and time for the park and tram plan, Beyond the Old Remin for doing their baskets for the vets, and upcoming cookies and stuff that they will be doing, Montrose Aces Committee for breakfast with Santa along the path, doing Secret Santa shop.
Thank you for doing all of mine also.
Sorry. What else do we have? Can I get it?
Sorry, it's just a little bit too many in that, so you're good.
Okay.
Jill, any acknowledgements, so you already got all yours?
She stole mine.
Okay. And yours as well?
Sorry.
Lloyd, any of them? I have a couple others, I'd like to acknowledge the feed organization for each and every day for setting up another food drop for December, that's really important. Yeah, they have more, so excellent stuff, they're doing that in addition.
Where are they happening at?
Here, right here.
The twenty seconds.
And the need for that has been very good, because the turnout for those has been unbelievable. And also to the fire department for hosting the regional fire department meeting, twenty-six of our firefighters, out of twenty-six showed up for that, so it was excellent, nice turnout for that, and very well appreciated to be able to host that here in Montrose, so.
I do have one more. The fire department for giving up, allowing their space to be used for the feed department, because it's my understanding that they will be going in to that area, pulling truck out to get in, so thank you guys for allowing them to do that.
Any further? Anything pretty good in the sixth? I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I will second.
I vote aye, Lloyd.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh, always standing.